Good evening, and welcome to the February 28th regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. There's just one more month of winter left. At least that's what the calendar says.
The groundhog?
I think the groundhog said spring, but we shall see, and hopefully no more snow. It's customary to hold a meeting in a moment of silence, so would you please join the board and take a couple of deep breaths, prepare for the evening ahead, and be thankful. Thank you, and please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
No special actions? Brings us to our first round of public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment for our first round of public comment, seeing none, we'll move right along. I believe that brings us, as I turn my page, to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. And that would bring up Peggy Driscoll for Planning Commission.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission, here to give you a synopsis of our February 20th meeting. All we had were a couple JMZO amendments. The first one was the nonconforming use amendment. This amendment, proposed by Wrightstown Township, would help to regulate expansion of nonconforming structures, primarily by requiring additions to principal structures and auxiliary to comply with maximum height and setback requirements. The commission voted to recommend that the board approve adoption of this ordinance. Next, we had the wireless amendment. This amendment, drafted by the Cohen Group, experts on wireless communications, would help the jointure better regulate location, placement, construction, and maintenance of wireless equipment. As technology changes, this amendment updates existing ordinances to help comply with both federal and state regulations, while allowing the municipalities to have some control over the facilities. The commission members agreed that this is beyond our expertise, and we would rely on the advice of the experts in the field. We voted to recommend that the board approve adoption in conjunction with our jointure partners. It is our understanding that issues regarding health ramifications of the facilities are to be addressed separately. And that was all we had.
Any questions for the Planning Commission report?
I had a question, if I may. When you said health issues ought to be addressed separately, did you have any discussion of that, how that would work?
No, we didn't. Not yet. I mean, we've discussed it previously in other meetings, and a lot of people have concerns about what is put out by the wireless. And I think right now, we want to get the amendment in place, and then we will be discussing it at a future meeting.
I think we had a discussion at the JZC about the small antennas, mainly, which I don't know if we'd even have any in Newtown. That may be located close to private residents, and how to handle any complaints by residents who claim that this is a health hazard for them.
Uh huh.
I think we had some people in the audience here. And I don't know if the current ordinance amendment has adequate provision for that. I have to look through it again. It's about 60 pages, correct? Something like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think this is just addressing the amendment that was drafted, and kind of gives us a little bit of control over where they're going and where they'll be placed, and the health issues, we will, I'm sure, come up, and that will be a topic of discussion.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we can decide if it's a health issue or not, but if somebody is having a complaint against a wireless small antenna next to their bedroom or something like that, you know, how do you handle those complaints is really, I think, the issue.
I don't really know, to be honest with you, how we would handle that.
And we will be talking a little bit more about this when we address whether to approve this ordinance or send it back to the jointure for advertising. But it's better than it was when we first got it. Now there is designation of who the complaint goes to and how it's handled in so many days. So there is some tightening of that.
There is, and we do have control over where they will be placed, so that's a big deal.
Conditional use, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Fisher.
Okay.
Yep, you're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. All right. I guess that brings us to board members' reports. First of all, I want to thank Ellen for taking over the first part of the meeting last week. I forgot to mention that to her, even though I had it in my script to do. Couple of things. I attended a couple of meetings. One was the NAACP Bucks County Police Study Presentation at the Bucks County Community College on the 15th of February. The report was offered, there was some brief review of it was done, but they really wanted us to read the whole report and make some further comments. I will be talking to, I asked Chief Fern for a little bit of time to talk to him about the findings, and so that's going to happen next week. The other meeting that I went to was this past Saturday. I went to the Bucks County Association of Township Officials, otherwise known as BACATO or BACATO. It was their annual morning convention. We viewed presentations by the Bucks County Planning Commission, some innovations that they have with GIS. There was a presentation about the July 12 flooding in Upper Makefield, and that was very eye-opening, and it was very eye-opening, and it really did make me sensitive to the fact of how strong that water was. I'm just imagining things as I'm talking. Anyway, the third happening was we heard from all three county commissioners. They each spoke for a while, and a common theme for all three of them was mental health, and something that I spent 40 years doing, so it was good to hear about that, hear them talk about that. Those are my meeting reports. Madam Vice Chair?
Good evening. First, I would like to talk about plastics. We have multiple contacts with other townships asking for help, including Lower Southampton, Upper Makefield, Middletown, and Newtown Borough, and they're all taking up issues of a plastic ordinance that, let's say, mimics our own and uses our toolkit, which is very flattering to us. We spent a lot of years putting it together, and other townships find it very helpful. I attended the NFA meeting Monday night. We heard about the fire on Mahogany Walk and other business. I also attended a meeting of township officials discussing what the primary issues with their townships are, and I would say a big part of that was their sewer issues and what they're going to do about it, and that just led me to think how lucky we are here, that we don't have a lot of the issues that they were concerned with. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary-Treasurer?
Yes, thanks. I also attended the NAACP meeting. Thanks for that report. I also attended on February 21st the Human Relations Commission meeting, which now has four active members, and so there was a quorum. And at that meeting, Ms. Barbara Simmons, who's a member of the NAACP Bucks County Executive Board, informed the members about the Bucks County Mural Arts Program, and I handed out some information here, and there's some photographs of her murals. The project that she was discussing was an idea to have the Human Relations Commission sponsor a series of canvas murals attached to the chain link fence on the Pendott Walking Bridge from George School to the township. This would involve police departments of three communities: Newtown Township, Newtown Borough, and Middletown. The project also has the potential to involve students from Bucks County Community College, George School, and the Council Rock High School, as well as the Newtown Business Association. But Pendott had a banner, a mural banned for some time related to the fear of free speech issues. I'm not quite sure what the issues were, but Ms. Simmons and I are working on getting Pendott to draft a new policy to allow this purpose. The goal of the mural arts program in Bucks County is to bring together police, students, and citizens to design and paint murals together, which could help build trust that has been broken since the murder of George Floyd and other people of color across the country. Murals will also be painted in Quaker Town and Doylestown. We just had a discussion, no decisions were made. On this past Monday, I had my Meet Mac Monday Zoom meeting, and there was some discussion about LED, the LED street lighting project, and also about South Sycamore Street and potholes, and questions about Wawa and the location of the sewage treatment plant. I did get some information from Mr. Lewis on Wawa. They're in the process of finalizing the plan and may soon start construction, I guess. That's all I have to reply, thanks.
Mr. Calabot?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the park and rec report for this meeting. Touch a Truck is Thursday, March 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Veterans Park. This event is free for all ages. Come out and see up close vehicles you have seen driving around town. Also, pre-register today for the following upcoming programs. Newtown Rec Soccer League, ages four to five and six to eight. Then there's Lolly's Hoppers. And there's half-day camps. Camp Beach Tree for ages four to six. Playground Camp for grades one to four. There's also a sports camp for ages six to 12, for full and half-day. Weekly camps for all ages are online at Newtownfund.com. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Let me see. Reports of officials. That brings us to Solicitors Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report is consideration by the board to send the JMZO amendment dealing with the expansion of nonconforming structures back to the jointure to authorize advertisement. Again, this is not final approval of this ordinance this evening. It is just consideration to send it back to the jointure in its current form and recommend that it be advertised. Thus, the motion, if the boards have a mind, would be to send the JMZO ordinance amending the nonconforming structures allowing for expansion thereof back to the jointure to authorize advertisement.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Could you explain real quickly what they're trying to accomplish?
Certainly. This ordinance originated in Wrightstown. The purpose is to allow a principal nonconforming structure on a property to increase in height, but only up to the maximum height permitted in the applicable zoning district. Previously, nonconforming structures could not increase in height. The practical impact of the ordinance will be to allow one-story homes, such as ranch homes, to add a second floor.
I guess this would especially be helpful when there's no way for them to expand outward.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we can have further discussion? Do we have a motion to send this to the jointure for advertising? Anyone? Anyone? Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Do you have a second? I'll second it. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I think you already touched on the subject, but I'm just curious, there's really no description within this ordinance as to what we're looking at. Mr. Sanders did describe a rancher of some type, but we have height ordinances in our township. I mean, what is the height ordinance? I mean, they just shoot from the hip and determine what the height is when it comes to them?
Oh, no. The ordinance is clear, the proposed amendment is clear, that the height of a structure cannot exceed the maximum height limitation in the zoning district in which that structure is located.
So they have multiple height restrictions for different zoning?
Correct.
As opposed to what we have?
No, we have the same.
Do we have a 40-foot height maximum?
Whichever the zoning, whatever the underlying zoning district requires.
Well, I think that goes through the whole township.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, but what I'm saying is, I think the 40-foot height goes through the whole township in Newtown, doesn't it?
I don't know the answer offhand. I think, Phil, I think that's probably in commercial or industrial districts rather than residential districts. I don't believe there's a 40-foot height limit in residential districts.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to put a 40-foot
I would hope not.
... on their single-family home.
Exactly. They've got to comply.
But I mean, this doesn't tell us anything. I think it's a very sparse ordinance, doesn't even describe what nonconforming properties or issues they're talking about. And again, not that it affects Newtown Township, it affects more Upper Makefield and Wrightstown, but I mean, it really tells us nothing. It's pretty nondescript in regards to what this ordinance has entailed.
It's taking an existing provision in the joint municipal zoning ordinance and just amending the language. It's not adding a new section that is in a vacuum. It already discusses the expansion of a nonconforming structure. They're just saying that, they're really just eliminating the prohibition against a height increase and allowing a height increase where a height increase was not previously allowed. And again, they're saying that it's got to comply with the maximum height limitation of the district in which the property is located. So this is, again, an existing provision that they're just tweaking to allow a height increase where it didn't exist previously.
Well, shouldn't the other information be available to us in regards to the structures and things like that? And if it is an amendment to an ordinance of 1983, in that ordinance, isn't there descriptions?
Yeah, oh, yeah, there are definitions.
Why aren't we given those descriptions from 1983?
Well, they're in the ordinance.
We're not given anything.
They're in the ordinance, nonconforming uses are defined.
Yeah, but we're asked to pass this and agree upon it without even knowing what was done back in 1983.
Well, I'll tell you what was done back in 1983.
Well, I want it in writing. I don't think, you saying it is really...
The existing language of this section, this subsection B in Section 1208, that's what was from 1983. What was there without the red changes that the amendment is proposing. That's what's there in the ordinance now. They're just making it, they're just allowing a height increase to nonconforming structures throughout the jointure. Look, I'm not, I'm just trying to explain it to you and give you the background. You're going to take whatever position you wish on it.
Well, your explanation is about as good as what's written on this paper, which is no description at all. I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying whoever submits this, the jointure itself should have been more descriptive in what they want done.
Was there some explanatory material that was submitted with this ordinance from the solicitor to the jointure? I think it's Vicky Kushdo, who submitted an explanation.
She submitted an explanation for the DAS, but not for this.
Not for this one.
Does that tell you what kind of building it's affecting?
I mean, it just seems like...
Well, it's obviously the cellular thing, as much as 60 pages, whatever it is. You know, again, this is making minor tweaks to an existing provision dealing with nonconforming structures, allowing the height increase.
It seems like it's a little overkill to me, but I have no problem with it.
I think that probably Wrightstown faced somebody coming in who owned a ranch house that was nonconforming. Maybe it was on, maybe it was already encroaching into a yard. Maybe it was too many square feet in area, whatever. They came in and said, "We'd like to add a second floor." And they looked at the ordinance and said, "Well, you cannot," it currently says, "you cannot increase the height of a nonconforming structure." And they said, "Well, that doesn't seem fair to a person who lives in a one-story structure. They're not going to be able to expand outward or expand the envelope, but they should be able to add a second floor up to the height limitation located in that zoning district." And that's what this amendment does.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of sending this ordinance back to the jointure for advertising, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is considering sending the Small Cell Wireless Communications Ordinance back to the jointure to authorize advertisement, and that would be the appropriate motion to make if the board has a mind.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? I would just add my two cents that we did, I believe we listened to some members of the public a year, year and a half, two years ago, when this was first put out. We engaged the law firm that specializes in this kind of writing, this kind of law, and we invited our jointure partners for that discussion. And while it's not perfect, we are in a position where this, the federal government and state government tell us we have to allow this use, I'm guessing this is a use.
Correct.
We have to allow it, but we can regulate it. And I think we've taken some strides in the regulation to build in some more protections for the health and welfare of our citizens, so. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of sending this ordinance for distributed antenna services, systems? All those in favor of sending it back to the jointure for advertising, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final item on our report is the Saul Zoning Hearing Board Appeal, the Saul New Zoning Hearing Board Appeal, to be heard by the zoning hearing board on March 7th. It's an application for three Aspen Court for the construction of a three-season sunroom addition that encroaches into the side yard. Question for the board is whether it wishes to take a position on this application.
Anyone want to take a position?
Hearing crickets, we will complete our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. That brings us to Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $5,238,188. Plan expiration before the board with no action required. This evening, we have Assistant Fire Chief Nick Weaver to give the monthly ESD report.
Welcome, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Sorry, Chief Force is unable to attend due to being ill, so you only have the second-rate fire chief of the day here today. I'm here to report on the fire department's January monthly report, was sent out under your package, so I won't go too far into weeds, get some highlights for you. I offer any inquiries if possible. The combined response to all the calls in January was 128 incidents. We did have 35 fire safety inspections in the township, two used in occupancy, four fire permit inspections in the township. And in the borough, we had three fire inspections, one used in occupancy, and one permit inspection. Also, the volunteers had training on their PPE and SCBA. That is a mandatory annual training to make sure we're all up to snuff. We do that throughout the whole year. We also do it with the career staff as well. There was an operational officers meeting as well, to kick off the year with newly appointed volunteer officers to get us all on the same page. We also had the mandatory first aid CPR training that we never want to use, we need to make sure we keep up on. Also, we had two of our firefighters go through CPR instructor training as well. I was able to sneak them in on that. They will expand me to three people we have to provide CPR training for the community. We also had, at the end of the month, a training on the roles and responsibilities on the rescue truck, which sounds a little trivial, but it's actually very important. We've kicked off a new training program this year to really emphasize bringing up the standards of newly inexperienced firefighters, which did pay off this weekend, which I'll comment a little bit later. Also, as you probably saw on the news, the computer-aided dispatch for Bucks County did go down for nine days. It did have some hiccups there, and I will say, dispatchers are doing an amazing job. We always make jokes about them, but they went back to the Stone Age, back when my dad was a dispatcher years ago, and they made it through and they got it back up and running. Currently, we still don't have our mobile data terminals, which are the computers in the trucks, but now we actually have a timely dispatch, more instantaneous, so. But they are very positive this should not be happening again. I want to comment on, as you probably are all aware of and people watching at home, we did have a significant fire on Monday morning. At 4:27 a.m., we were dispatched to a dwelling fire in the grant of Mahogany Walk 404. Sadly, we had to pull out one of our residents, Verta Catozi, who passed away and succumbed to her injuries in the fire. The fire was handled expeditiously, EMS on scene. We had life-saving activities on the front lawn, but we were unable to resuscitate her. Sadly, that occurred. We will be doing a smoke detector campaign throughout the community, as well specifically the grant and that street. Hopefully, we'll be doing door-to-door knocks to get smoke detectors installed, and a reminder, hopefully, to everyone here on the board and anyone who's listening to the meeting, please check your smoke detectors, they do save lives. Make sure you have one on each floor, in each bedroom, outside of each sleeping area. Please close your doors at night. I understand that you want to keep your doors open for your children. Invest in a baby monitor. Keep your doors shut at night. A hollow corridor will hold a lot of fire back, so please. I know I'm speaking to you guys here, it's for everyone listening on this, so we have free smoke detectors to hand out and to install. We will come out to any residents in the community and evaluate the needs of your home and put them in for you. And if anyone who doesn't live here, I know there's not many present in the audience, but most communities have the same program as well. The last item... The last item that's newer is that I can proudly say that we are authorized to offer conditional letters of employment for the Safer Grant firefighters, and five minutes before this meeting, I got all of them back now. So we're moving forward with the testing to get them on board. I know the manager will discuss that as well. But I'd be more than happy to solicit any questions you have about the report or the incident this week.
When you say you got all the letters back, that means that they all accepted the petition?
Yep, we have five, the top five firefighters. We always want, as I know Chief Hearn talks about when they hire the police, we always want the best of the best. I'll say we had 48 applicants, which is a very large number for the fire service. We had 17 at the end of that, who were eligible to be hired, and the top five candidates accepted their letters. So it's very happy to say that because we don't, usually you have a spot and you only get maybe four applicants, so 48 is a good number.
Fantastic. And may I ask one other question?
Absolutely, sir.
What is the stone age like when you're talking about?
Well, we joke around pigeons flying around in the room, but they actually, in all seriousness, is that where right now, if you called 911, it would come up, it has all your information comes up, pre-populates, they're typing it. As they're typing it, it's going to other terminals and sending dispatchers to send other resources out. The stone age, as I make it as a joke there, but in seriousness, they have to write it down on carbon copy and triple kit. So those dispatchers are sitting there like they would have done before computers were around and actually start handwriting it out and ripping sheets off and running it across the room to other dispatchers like they used to. And then they'd have to take the response cards. But I'll say police is easier. There's only a few sectors. But for a fire department response, you have to, there's multiple boxes, which is our response districts. And then as well as they have to figure out who's due on that. So an average dwelling fire, you have four to five fire departments responding. They have to figure out who should be going on that and dispatch them out. So they really did an amazing job and worked very hard. And apparently they have, I think, I'm not going to say 100,000, I forget the number, tens of thousands of hard copy documents they now have to start scanning in and collating in their database.
Was that due to a hacker?
Yes, I'm not speaking for the county. They did release that though, but it was a ransomware attack. So they did not pay into that, obviously, because you don't do that, but they were able to overcome that within the nine days, get their system back online. And please don't open up random emails. I don't know what it was from, but just a kind reminder.
Should the IT department in the county have been aware of such a thing and have prevented it?
I don't know. I don't have that information. I do know that I did attend a meeting with the district fire chiefs, and Audrey Kenny was there, the director of emergency services for the county, and she did comment on it. And she stated that IT is doing a revamp and figuring out an investigation. They're also working with the FBI. And I don't think the ATF or the FBI, the AG's office, and county detectives to figure out exactly why it happened and be able to plug whatever hole that was or provide mitigation or training so it wouldn't happen in the future, so. So I can't comment on it further, but I don't want to put words in their mouth.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, Mr. Chairman, I have one item for the board's consideration. It's the approval of the tentative agreement with the firefighters' union. The township and the firefighters' union have agreed, have reached a tentative agreement to provide seven-day-a-week coverage for 12 hours a day. There were no, the highlights of the agreement include three-year contract extension, a seven-day, 12-hour-per-day shift schedule, an additional 3% pay above the 2024 salaries for existing firefighters, and the addition of two lieutenants in the chain of command. Appropriate motion, be motion to approve the tentative agreement with CWO firefighters' union dated February 26, 2024.
Do we have such a motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll be glad to second it. Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, questions for the manager? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the tentative firefighters? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have another report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Question for the manager, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
The plan expiration report, my favorite. Dorm Investment LP, I see that their date was actually yesterday. Oh, no, it's coming up on the 27th with no extension. If nothing's done on the 27th, what would happen?
That's the 27th of March.
Right, exactly. If nothing happens on that date, by that date, what happens?
We're talking about the conditional use application?
We've been before this a couple times.
Expires on April 12th, I think, and we're going to schedule a hearing for April 10th.
Right, so we're advertising it for.
But we have a hearing date on the 27th of next month.
That was tentative. We have decided on the 10th of April.
Okay. And what is the status of the KRE Upper McCongey Associates LP?
I don't believe there's any real status update. It's still suspended. If we were to continue with any other hearings, it would have to be advertised.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clabow. That brings us to minutes, bills, and reports.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 14, 2024 meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Now, I have one change that I just saw like a half an hour before the meeting, and I didn't get a chance to say anything. On page two, under the reports, under my report, it says that I attended the zoning hearing board, the ZHB. I actually attended the joint zoning council. So it's just the acronyms that got, I don't want anybody to say that I wasn't at the zoning hearing board.
So could I amend my motion to approve it with the correction to be made?
Yes.
So I do so.
And was it, and who was the second?
No second yet.
I don't think there was a second.
Okay.
Did you, oh, Ellen, okay.
So Ellen, in the case that you seconded it, are you okay with making that change? Okay. With that change, any further discussion? I'm sorry to bring it up even. Hearing none, seeing none, call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
And all abstain.
Okay, so 401. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, onto the bills list.
Alrighty. I make a motion that we pay our February 28, 2024 bills totaling $156,120.87.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
I have one comment, maybe, on page two, under Armor &amp; Sons Electric Incorporated with various streetlight repairs. There's an entry that just says 9451. I don't know how much money that is. And there was another similar problem elsewhere on page five. I guess it has something to do with how the new software is underperforming. But I don't know if that 9451 means $94.51, or does it mean something else? Do you see that on page two, under Armor &amp; Sons?
Or was it like a line number or something?
Am I mistaken here? Page one, page two. Armor &amp; Sons, if you look down.
I'm getting there.
Okay, this changed. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing here. All right, let's say never mind. Sorry. I thought I saw some kind of number here that was.
It was under Armor &amp; Sons?
It was under Armor &amp; Sons, but I guess I was looking at something else. Sorry.
I verified, but my iPad's acting up here. It's frozen.
We're having technical problems.
I'd just like to say I'm happy not to see Toronto Dominion Bank on this week's bills list.
Okay, so you can vote for it?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, I believe. Any other discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor of paying our bills and soliciting on the February 28 bills list, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, finally, I move that we approve fund transfers according to our February 28, 2024 bills list of $270,000.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our inter-fund transfers for February 28, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, that brings us to our second round of public comments. If there are any public comments, please come to the microphone. State your name.
Even if you're well-known. John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Like to extend my condolences to the Katozi family from Mahogany Walk. I knew the family for almost 30 years, and they were good people. Also, I won't get into it, but the guy that likes to post online, but kind of to me was a controversial thing, instigate, trying to instigate our citizens to stuff that doesn't exist in Newtown. I mean, I wish we would keep that stuff in Brooklyn or some other dirty place, and not in Newtown. It doesn't belong here. And as far as the plastic ordinance, tell those other townships to copy it on a liberal website like you guys did. Thank you.
Thank you. And the other, I guess we go right to old business. There was one item of old business, and that is the AV system discussion. We had talked about putting this in a work session. We can still do that if people want to, but seeing that the agenda was light this evening, I just want to take some time to basically clarify and present my hope that we could maybe move this on a little bit. We have had a work session back in July where we got to ask a lot of questions. And then we got some revised, some revision, revised proposals from Video Gold in August, I believe, after that July meeting. And in the budget, we budgeted $125,000 in the ARPA funds for doing the upgrade for the AV project. And on November 21st, we actually approved, I have the minutes here, so I can give you the exact wording, but we approved the expenditure of up to $125,000 for the upgrade. So here we stand in February. We'd like to try to start ordering some equipment. And there was some discussion at board meetings about having, I guess, a couple of reservations here and there. We got one more, one-page write-up of the proposals. And we also got a resume from the vendor. So I don't know if those two things, the resume and the one-pager, helped anyone make their minds, satisfy, satisfy your any qualms that we had about proceeding. So I just wanted to ask the board, do you mean, can we give the administration some directions so that they can start pulling some of the equipment together, ordering some things, which may take a while to get here?
Well, I had a question, if I may. I don't recall if there was any mention like of a timeline or what the steps are involved. Obviously, it's sounding like you need to order equipment, and then you need to do some kind of construction here. Is there any timeline for when this might be, this project could be completed?
So in short, it would hopefully be over the summer. When we typically pare down the meetings to one meeting a month. That way we have no interruptions. But it all depends on supply chain.
And I guess we won't know that until we try to order something. Can you tell us? It's going to be nine months instead of three months.
Yeah.
Well, let's say you had all the supplies. Do you have any idea how long it would take to update the system here?
I mean, I don't know about the construction of it. I would say probably a month or so. Just guessing.
Just to reiterate, there has to be some kind of cabling through the rafters somehow. Is that correct?
Yeah, the wires need to come from down here to up there.
And I think he promised that there won't be any echo anymore. Are we replacing these microphones here?
If it fits within that $125,000, yes.
Okay. So will you maybe ask how long it's projected to?
Yeah, we could certainly inquire.
I would like to move on with this and get it done. So I'm in favor of it.
Me too. Mr. Davis, Mr. Clabow? Okay. So that gives you some direction, Mr. Lewis? Fantastic. Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, are we finished with that topic?
We're finished with that topic.
I have one or two things on the old business. I think what previous meeting, we asked about having the Artesian Water Company come in and make a report. Is there any progress on that?
So Newtown Artesian will be here in the near future with either a zoning application or a land development application for an expansion on a plant. So I have talked to Dan Ango, the director over there, and he is in agreement, but he's just trying to work on that project and then compile some information for you guys in the near future.
I understand there are new specifications about PSAs or whatever they're called. You have to get it down to zero.
That's good.
That sounds good to me. I know we also mentioned TD Bank, but we're going to let that go because we didn't have any charges there. Thank you.
Anyone else for old business or new business?
Sorry, I do have a couple of things on new business because residents have been notifying me about trash along the Lower Dolington Road Trail, specifically dog poop bags, and specifically from the Woods of Saxony. And there were, the HRA is concerned that this will be a continuing problem. And as they were promised, they have no responsibility to clean up the trail. Is there anything that the township can do to mitigate? We don't have any waste disposal receptacles. I thought we did at some point, but they were removed.
We might have some in. We might have some in, in a park. I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, I would just say that people should accept some personal responsibility and clean up after themselves or their pet.
John, is this happening on association property?
Yes, both the property, there were doggy bags thrown over the signage onto the property. And then the next day, there were more bags thrown on the trail itself. And so, I haven't been on the trail lately to monitor all the trash, but I would hope that, you know, people will clean up after themselves and not dispose it.
Just a suggestion, within Newtown Grant, we do have trash cans up and down North Drive. And basically, they're paid for from the association where that trash can happens to be in. I know Society Place has two of them, of which we paid for, and they have them going, I mean, Mr. DiApril can even attest for it, they have them going down North Drive. But that particular association would pay for that trash can. And then there's a person that picks it up. We have, we hire a person that picks it up, I don't know, once or twice a month. So, there is a way to do it, but that's not, it's not township property. It would have to be that particular association to agree to do that.
Well, I was told that they were promised this trail would not have any financial impact on them, so they're unwilling, I believe, to foot a bill to put any trash cans like that. I know in our homeowners association, we have specifically doggy poop receptacles, and we also pay to have them removed and cleaned up. So, I guess this is, you know, the way things are. I know that citizens are really appreciative of the trail, and if people have a mind, they might help, you know, volunteer to clean up. But if the township does have trash receptacles in other locations like the parks, I'm just trying to suggest that perhaps there could be at least one located next to the benches south of Woods of Saxony, where, you know, this could be taken care of by the Public Works Department. Doesn't seem to be a big to-do. Otherwise, there's also trash, I was notified, that come from traffic just going by.
Can you tell me when this was? Because I walked the trail today with Nikki.
It's just south of Yorkshire Drive.
Wasn't there today.
Well, I have a photo if you want to see it.
From today?
Not today, no, yesterday, day before, maybe.
It's not there now. It's the same.
Well, somebody?
We have it in Rain Tree, too. We have receptacles in Rain Tree.
Somebody must have picked it up, which is good, but I'm just requiring. Another problem that was noted to me was South Sycamore Street I saw, specifically the area rug building and the gurus, which is in the historic district, correct? And I had an email with Mr. Mala from the Harp, who asked if there was any, he notified me that these two structures were under contract. One was under contract area. I saw them stripping away some of the old paint that was flaking off. Gurus may be on the market, so for it might be a new owner. But Mr. Mala from the Harp was wondering that there's no ordinance for enforcement of maintenance on these structures in this historic district. And he was wondering what the, he asked if maybe Mr. Sandick could tell us what the process is to create an ordinance of enforcement in the historic district for maintenance. Is that something that's?
Yes, that may be possible. I will look into that, John, and get back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Maybe you should get back to Mr. Mala. I don't know.
Any, everyone on that email.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
I apparently just got the email before the meeting started. My name wasn't on it somehow. So, I'll read that after the meeting and see what they're referring to. Any other business this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to bring up something in regards to some questions residents have had about their homeowners or condo associations. And knowing that probably all of us here have been on a condo or homeowners association, I'm just curious, since I sat on mine for a lot of years, is there any state organization that kind of monitors what goes on in condo and homeowners associations, the work that a management company does? Because some of these management companies, we just take their words that they're balancing the book, so to speak. And some of these associations, as we know, a lot of people, I find them to be probably the purest form of local government because they handle everything that is done within your life daily. And some of these associations have the same people on these boards for centuries, and they form their own fiefdoms, of which I personally, in my association, have been denied seeing the budget, of which I think I'm entitled to. And I'm just curious if there is a state department out there that monitors homeowners associations? Because I think it's important to the people that live here, because every, everything here is an association, that these people realize that the ones that are on their condo boards and/or homeowners associations can actually be in control of their pocketbooks, you know, doing repairs that are never been approved and things like that. So, I was just wondering, I don't know if the solicitor could find this out or somebody could find this out. But I think if there is someone who's in charge of such a department, I would like for them to come and also give us a presentation, maybe at a work session, because I think it's important for the people, well, one, they should be getting involved with their associations and knowing what's going on. And two, if they have a request such as a budget, you know, a copy of the budget, they should be able to, be entitled to get that. So, I just want, this isn't for discussion, I just wanted to throw that out there because I've had people come up to me with concerns about that. Why are we being charged this? Why are we being charged that? And I think that homeowners association boards should be accountable to what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Clabow. Very interesting. Any other business? Going once, going twice. We had no need for an executive session. And without objection, I will conclude our meeting this evening. Thank you. We are adjourned.